Today, October 4th. We're meeting here in the John Hoogum Meeting Room. It's the Moretown Select Board. Call a meeting to order. So we'll start with the agenda. Six o'clock. We've got general public comments. We have a few gentlemen in tonight. I don't know if they would like to start. Guys, I don't know who was here first or if you guys are here for public comment. Sir?
When you say "public comment," I'm not sure what you mean by that.
Well, if you would like to make it general public comment, what's your... You're welcome to be here just to be here, but is there any purpose?
I've had a survey done and it's been five years since the town took 20 acres from me and gave it to someone else. I want to know how that happens.
How the town took 20 acres from you? Can you share a little bit more about this?
I got my tax bill on... What? Oh, Ira Hatch.
Ira Hatch, okay.
I got my tax bill in '17 and I went from 43 acres down to 29. Prior to that, when I bought the property, they said, "You..." I have...my deed says 50 acres. They said you only have...the realtor said you only have 43 acres. So I got into the town here and asked what that...where'd my seven acres go? They don't...nobody knew anything. And so then they took 16 more. Then I'm a little excited now because now there's 20 acres and they're giving it to my neighbor. And so I go down and I said, "You know, what the heck is this?"
So would you say they...was it the listers that made this change? Was that...
The girl here, Brown, Cheryl Brown, she says the tax...they made a new tax map. And the guy comes and he just makes marks on there and that's...and then they go by that. And I know that is not true. Certainly not.
And that was in 2017, you say?
I believe that's right because I had a tax bill of 60 and I had 43 acres at that time. Since I've had the survey done, I have 49.7 acres. But the aggravation and money that it has cost me, I want to know why I had to go through all this.
So you had 49.7 acres is what the survey showed now? Was that survey after this happened?
After they took that land, right? Because I came down and I said, "What's going on?" Put it back like it was. And she said, "You have to have a survey." I said, "Well, you didn't have one." And nobody was surveying the area at the time. There was nothing going on. I want to know how we got to this point. I mean, now, she told me today, "Well, tomorrow we'll have this resolved and I'll revise your bill and send it to you."
Right, so we have for tonight on errors and omissions, we have a change to kind of what you said. We're going from 29 acres prior to 29 acres to 49.7 acres. And that's a new survey that was given to the town or here in April. Actually, it should have been done by the listers prior to submitting the list. So we will correct that. And then what we can do is I can...we can go back and find out in 2017 why it was changed. I can't type tonight, I don't do that stuff, but I'm willing to go back and try to find out for you. I know we were having our tax maps updated.
That's right.
So I imagine it had something to do with that, but let's ask them, the people who were doing it, why was it changed?
The guy that received the property was running around with a GPS saying that my property was his. Now, I don't know, but when them tax people come to make a new map and they...they don't have anything until somebody gives them direction.
Right.
And I want to know who gave them the direction and what was it?
All right, well, we'll look into it and find out where the change came from and we'll...
I feel that I'm out five years. I mean, I can't sell my property. I can't...there's all kinds of things that I can't do with it when it's not correct. And I know it's not correct. And now you know it's not correct. So I'd like to get to the bottom of it. It cost me a lot of money. It's cost me tremendous aggravation and so on.
Well, as I mentioned, we will look at...and we'll contact the people who were working on the tax maps and find out why it was changed. There were a number of parcels changed in town for various reasons, but we'll find out and get an explanation for you.
Yeah, okay. So you're going to go ahead with this, send me a revised bill?
Yeah, so tonight, after...
And I wonder why a revised bill seeing as how the last five years it was that? And now that I'm better than six months into it, why should I pay what I should have been paying right along when they're not giving it back to me until today?
Well, we're doing the best we can with the changes that we had. You brought the map in. We're doing that for you. So you're being credited with more acreage. Yes, yes, you do have to pay for it.
Yeah, but who's been paying for it up until now?
Probably wherever it had been.
Right, and that's the other thing that Cheryl Brown said, "Well, don't worry about it. Just let them pay the taxes." I'm guessing that...
Well, just when those went out, when all the new tax maps went out, you were given a letter talking about the changes and there was opportunity to come in and grieve those changes.
I didn't get that.
They're sent out, so you may or may not have got it or you may have taken it for another piece of junk mail, which often people do. But there was an opportunity for you, certainly in the last five years since that change, to come in every year and grieve that.
Every year, when I...you remember when I paid what they tell me that I owe now? I always say, "This is no...I'm not saying that you guys are correct by paying this bill. I'm only paying the bill so that I don't get..."
Sure.
"...penalized for not paying my taxes."
Yep. Well, that point is when you should have been instructed or made a grievance at that point. As soon as you learn that you didn't...the acreage wasn't correct would be the best time.
Well, that's what I did come...as a matter of fact...
Did you file any papers?
They were having a meeting here. When I came to a meeting and it was about a predation. And they said, "What's your problem?" And so I told them what my problem was. Said, "Well, we don't have anything to do with that." I feel that they do have something to do with it. That somebody that...as a matter of fact, the woman that was a lister, she had stood up and I was standing there. And she said, "If you've got trouble with your neighbors, why don't you take it up with your neighbors?" Now, I gotta say, when you take my property and you give it to somebody else, I think she should have been concerned with that, that she would have tried herself. And still, she just blows me off, you know? I'm flattered at it, the way things have been handled.
Well, I'm sorry. And as I said, we were looking to make a correction tonight. And then we can look into when the tax maps were updated, why yours was changed.
Okay.
That's all I can tell you.
Yeah, and when do I find that out?
Well, it's...we'll start that process tomorrow. It shouldn't be too long, you know, within a couple of weeks.
Yeah, okay. So you're going to send me everybody's bill and...
Yes, we will. We'll make sure that's out within the next couple of days.
I'm going to have my acreage back on the tax map.
Say again?
I'm going to have my acreage back on the tax map.
Yes, you will. To 49.7 acres.
Okay.
And you did what was...everything that you did was correct and having it resurveyed and so on. So it was good. It was good that you did that.
Right, well, I had no choice. What else can I do? So I was forced into that situation. I really feel bad about the way it all went down.
Well, we feel badly for everybody who did have issues, you know? And as Tom said, we'll definitely correct yours, as we did to the others.
I believe myself that the neighbor did all of this, that he...somebody in here allowed him to talk to the tax people and then they did what he said. He never had to do a survey. He collected my property. He never did a survey, said he wasn't going to do one. And told me that he owned my land. I mean, I didn't do the right thing because the way that I wanted to handle it was not the way I had to handle it. I need to tell you that.
Well, I'm glad you've handled it this way. That was well done. Thank you for bringing the survey and we'll get back to you. We'll look into it and try to figure out what happened there, Mr. Hatch.
Thank you.
May I ask you a question?
Yes, sir. What's your name?
Steven Hatch.
My brother.
Yep.
I used to be a zootista in the street in Lafayette. I'm very familiar with what's going on. You do not change a tax map, period. You don't change tax maps unless you've got surveys to go with them. Otherwise, you don't change any tax maps. You can't get a guy in here and just draw pictures on your map and say, "That's the tax map." Is this not...that's not the way you do it?
Well, we had the tax maps updated by an outside firm and there was this...you know, I don't know what to tell you. That's...I don't know the exact...all the changes and how they made changes, but I know they spent a couple of years doing it. And it's something that's done in every town. So it does happen. Tax maps are updated.
Well, and up to the extent that happens here, it was incredible how many people lost later or gained later.
All right, well, I'm not going to debate that with you tonight. Is there any other comments you have?
I don't think so.
Thank you. Travis, what do you got for us?
I have two things deeper degree than Tom. Have you noticed the complaining commission hasn't posted a mandate?
Yep.
Thank you.
The complaining commission hasn't posted a mandate since July 2000...I mean, 2001, '21.
So this July?
This July. There hasn't been a mandate posted from that point on.
All right. Sasha, you don't...what have they had for meetings, have they?
I can check into it and certainly get that fixed.
All right.
And I have another concern dealing with...yesterday, there was two dirt bikes harassing on Moretown Mountain Road with an ATV and a white Toyota pickup truck following them. They were also down here in the town, riding on the sidewalks.
Down my house, too. Yep.
And... Did you call the police, Travis?
Well, that's also what I'm here to say is I hope anybody in the community will also call the Middlesex Barracks. And if you have any other information, please let the Middlesex Barracks know about any event that did happen. I almost hit them head on and they're on my side of the road, meaning I was going the way.
Right. Now, you said they were harassing. What do you mean by that?
They were going extremely fast on Moretown Mountain Road on the opposite sides of the road and then turning around, coming back, and then turning around again and going back.
Just in front of your place or...
No, no, just all...the whole entire road. They stopped down here. I had somebody that saw them down here at Moretown Store. And then they rode down the sidewalks down here that they also saw them.
And no one got any plate numbers or anything like that?
There's no plates on ATVs.
Okay, I didn't know that.
ATVs and their bikes.
All right.
And a pickup truck and like sort of with them, it definitely seemed like, but I can't say that for sure.
Did they go all the way up to the Moretown Gap? Did they all the way up there?
They went all the way down the rural line, all the way over here, so...
Because I saw the tracks, the corner of Howe's Road and my road.
Yeah, I would...you know, again, we're not a police agency here. But I appreciate you coming forward. And just call the state police as soon as you know. Email them like the lieutenant says over there, the more you call them, the more I have to get someone to come and...
Another incident where ATVs allowed on the roads may not be the appropriate thing to do, but that's just a comment, so...
Yep, no, that's...
Yep, that's it.
That it, Travis? All right. Miss, did you have comment on the...
I don't have, I'm only...
Okay, I'm sorry. I can't.
No, it's okay.
All right, so let's go ahead and move on to our agenda items here. And if there's no more...let me just make sure. I want to check to make sure we don't have...is someone actually trying to get in here? So when...if I have this up and people see that there's someone in the waiting room up here, someone say, "Hey, Tom, there's someone in the waiting room."
Oh, yeah.
So I will leave that open because I don't look down enough and... So Dylan? Hi, Dylan, how are you? I just wanted to see if he's here for public comment.
He's muted.
Mr. Frazier?
Oh, I'm sorry. My wrong name. That's my husband.
That's okay. Ms. Frazier, I'm sorry. Ms...so I'm just going to turn the volume down here. Just are you here for general public comment?
No, I work with a reporter to listen.
Oh, okay, that's fine. Just wanted to make sure you didn't have any questions. All right, and you can hear and see, okay?
Yes, thank you.
Very good. Thanks and I will hope you're well. Bye-bye. We're not bothering. I'm just going to mute everyone. All right. Very good. So we'll go ahead and move on to errors and omissions. Tonight, we have three. So I'll go over them, kind of explain them real quick, and then let's take a vote on them. The first one is Barbara Kohn, K-O-H-N. There was a correction, a change from 433,600. It's decreasing by 18,300 to 415,300 and corrected per survey on the map. Slide 39, from 166 acres to 139 acres. So that's our first correction. The second correction would be Kelvin Lee Ward in Sharon Town. A change from 491,500 to 513,200, difference of $21,700 increase. And there was a change from 2 to 3.2 acres and that was on slide 9D. Okay, Mr. Hatch was in earlier tonight. His change from 180 to 100 to $203,800, a change of $21,700 increase. And as we discussed earlier, that was corrected per survey from 29 acres to 49.7 acres. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve those.
Second.
Counting seconds. Any further discussion on the errors and omissions? If not, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. All right, Sasha, so we can make sure those corrected bills get out as soon as possible. That would be nice. Thank you. And Emily, why don't you roll up as close as you feel comfortable? And you...I know you had some budget or a budget question and I think it was on the heating that you...
Exactly. So I'm sure even you guys personally are aware that the heating has...costs have gone up. So that's the one area of the library budget that we are most concerned about is that we are over from this year and so we're planning for next year. And when we were looking at that and talking to Sherilyn about it as well, noticing that there are two line items for heating the town hall, one being from the library budget and the other in the town hall budget. So we are wondering if it made sense just to combine those into one line item for heating the town hall. And then going from there, looking at how much more to add in to actually cover the cost of heating.
Did you have...I think it's probably a good idea. Did you have an idea of what you were looking at or thinking of?
So the current...I have this at this hall to see the numbers.
Yeah, I probably have it in front of me here.
Okay. That the numbers combined between the two is 2,500, but that according to this year's cost of heating won't cover it for next year's if costs continue to be the same. So I was thinking just 3,500, but that's the call.
Well, I think you have a good idea there. Why don't we...first, we'll try to figure out based on what our contract is with Gillespie's to how much we're going to pay and how much is going up. And then we can figure out an equitable split between the two and figure it out. Really doesn't...to me, I don't really care. It's coming from the same pocket.
Exactly.
You know, we just...whether we want to...what I would like to...is just have it accurate so we know if you're spending 50% of the time in there, you know, we allocate 50% of the heating to that or if it's...just so we have an idea in case things down the road and think, well, what does it cost for us to heat with just the library or things like that? So more to figure out, to get it as accurate as we can to, you know, the building's open and using as much as it costs so we can forecast our budgets in the future. But if we can...so we can do with that and then we'll work with you on that and just figure out, you know, what it is and then try to the best algorithm to get it accurate for who's...
For the next budget.
Yep.
Okay, that's really all.
Is that it? How's everything else with the library stuff going as far as you're...
Well, everything's going really well, but we did lose our assistant librarian. She has moved on to a new career and that's the other sticky point is to be able to fill that position, especially in the job market right now, finding anyone to fill that. So that's the only other kind of struggle we have right now.
Yeah, it's...you're feeling the pain of what everyone is feeling.
Everyone's feeling that, exactly.
I don't know, does any of the libraries around have anyone that's working part-time that might be willing, you know, maybe the Lakefield Library and share some talent like that?
Yeah, I don't know.
That might be an idea to...you know, we've got...even reach out as far as Montpelier. You know, you never know. You might have someone that's...that's a hell, I'll go there for 20 hours a week, you know, I'm doing it here. And just put it out there. Nothing ventured, nothing gained.
Or even as far as Aldrich and Barry, because that's not bad.
Yeah, just in this little little Washington...
With that area.
It would be nice, really be nice to get someone a little experience and change some ideas of things that we guys are doing.
Yeah.
Because you're doing some really good things over there.
Yeah, but yeah, everything else is going great considering...
Yeah.
...the situation we all find ourselves in.
That is good. Well, good, thank you for coming, Emily.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, thanks.
So we're going to go ahead and move on. Our next agenda item is opening bids for the Fletcher Road Bridge, in which we've received none.
Winners said that the RFP wasn't detailed enough and they didn't want to go by the inspection. So I don't know if that has any impact on it. And then here, construction is just too busy right now. Otherwise, they would have... And Blow &amp; Cody just didn't answer and show up today.
Usually Blow &amp; Cody...
Yeah, maybe they're slammed.
All right, well, we'll have to have maybe Ray take a look at it. I know he had worked on that RFP before, but it was right at the end. I know Martin had kind of punted with it to him. And so maybe we should relook at it. It needs to be a little more detailed, obviously. It sounds like the scope of work wasn't clearly defined.
Yeah. So... If that's the second time we have more detail, they'll bid again.
Yeah. I think...and we can reach out to Blow &amp; Cody again and find out what the problem is there. They...in fact, they just did a project for us, the...actually, we're near Travis's place. They were doing that bridge over there. What was that?
Hopps Road.
Hopps Road.
Well, maybe there would be a spring, without a spring, you know, there'd be...what's the spring or summer or something?
Yeah.
Right now, we're kind of busy, but if they knew it was...
Does that grant, did it have to be done? It did have to be done this year, did it?
I don't know. I'll have to ask.
Yeah, I don't believe...I think that one, we had a couple of years on, so I think we're okay there. But we were just based on the condition of the bridge, we want to get it as done as soon as possible. But I think for time-wise, we can probably do that. Well, we have...the next thing up is Chuck with CB5, or that's at 6:45. So we've got 15 minutes before he gets here. Why don't we go move down to reports, communications? Sasha, what do you have for some reports?
There is a full court percut in there in that folder for approval. Also want to make sure that the errors and omissions gets... The PTO is asking about trick-or-treating. Does anybody have any input on that? They were kind of leaning towards not trick-or-treating this year. Do I have any input?
Trick-or-treating.
Yeah, I would say no, unfortunately.
On my side of things, I would say yes. I don't...
I would have to agree with you. I think we can.
I think it's...you know, this is a good thing to talk about, but I mean, it's outside.
Yeah, outside, yeah.
And I guess my comments would be is if people were...had their station outside. I think there's enough social distancing with asks.
Well, do we have...make...have, you know, unvaccinated wear masks or kids wear masks? I mean, whatever the recommendations would be to how that would fly, you know?
Do we...I mean, does the CDC have any recommendations? That would be...
Yeah, like what they're doing in the school. The kids are wearing masks and they wear masks outside over there, too. They'll just do the same thing.
Right.
Follow the same protocol as what the government has to the schools, you know? That's why schools are wearing masks.
Yeah, I think that would be a, you know...
I mean, you should follow that, right?
And that...I mean, it seems to be working here. I mean, they're...I don't know, you know, they may...we got to move on with life, too, you know? I understand it's a real...it's a very fine line between safety and people's health and moving on. So I mean, I don't want to be cavalier when I say that, or I'm not being. But I think that it's good that we talk about this and try to figure out if we're going to do this. Let's do it the best and safest way for people to do it. And Don, I think the recommendation as far as what are they doing at the school now, that would make sense to me. They're, you know, they've been here during the day and they're parading out with their masks and doing things. I think if they were...so Sasha, you know, you know, we're not going to vote on anything, but a consensus, it seems, if people, if they're following the rules of what's going on in the school, we don't object to it. Is that all right to say?
All right, I'll take it back. Take it, go trick-or-treating.
All right, Grinch? No.
Same, same rules as they have at school.
You want to sign right here?
Sure. What's that?
Sign right there.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Or it doesn't matter to me, I don't give a shit, I'll sign, to be honest with you.
Okay, I'll sign.
What were you saying, Don? Did you make it on the card?
He said the Grinch and I said that's a different holiday.
Okay. Alright. What else, Sasha?
Um, just want to remind everybody that ballots for the November 2nd vote are available.
Alright, so are you, we're not sending out any kind of ballots, obviously?
We've had a call to send them out.
So anyone that wants a ballot, request them and we will send them out. Anyone here tonight want a ballot?
I'm gonna take a ballot home, yep.
If you want. Travis, you want a ballot? You can get it tonight. Chuck, you can get your ballots tonight. It's for the bond vote. Very important, I think, for people to make sure they're.
Do we let people know that with the posting, that the ballots are?
I think maybe that might be a good thing to put out on front porch form tomorrow. Just let them know if they would like to request a ballot. We're not sending them out only upon request. I think that's there.
Yeah, I wonder maybe if Lisa and, I forget the other board, who's our other board members? Lisa Mason and.
Kristen. Kristen.
I wonder if they'll maybe know, so as we get a little closer to the vote, maybe they could post something as well and explain to people why it's important to vote or something.
Yeah, hopefully they will, we can.
I could mention something.
Maybe we, if you want to mention something to Lisa.
Yeah, she's, yeah.
That would be good. And, okay, what else? Sasha?
Robert Turner is going to be meeting with Martin on Thursday and then he's going to come here and meet Sherilyn and I. So hopefully we can get that engaged.
Alright.
I've had a few interactions with Mike Tarrant on the, that legal trail that we want to get wrapped up by the end of the year and I've been pushing.
Okay, that's.
But legal trail, that might be, if I don't mind that.
Plotch.
Well, there's no such thing as plotch.
Well, the legal trail.
Make sure, yeah?
Yes, thank you. And I need to have somebody be a designated person for the DocuSign for the efficiency Vermont. What's it called, Tom?
How would John be that?
Okay, I'll have him email that to you tomorrow so that we can get that phone.
Okay.
Is anyone?
I, I hope, I hope. I don't have, I haven't had service today.
Alright.
So, but, but.
If he, if it comes tomorrow and there's no service, Don, do you mind being the DocuSign server?
Yeah, or, sure, yeah, I guess so.
It's, it's a privilege, so.
Yeah. Fine, I'm excited to see you get done.
That's all I'm looking for.
And then so after I sign it, I can let the electrician know so that he can get, start to get up, or do we have to send them out a sign?
No, once it's signed, the electrician, it's all about.
But I mean, I can, I read that, but I can send him an email telling him to proceed or?
As soon as that's done, yes.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I'm allowed.
Yes, you are, Don.
Okay, alright, good.
Tap, give him a tap on the shoulder with that. Say he's, he's been anointed to.
No, I didn't know if it had to come from the chair or something.
No, we're all good with that, as long as we're all on the same page in some way.
Okay, I'll just check.
The last thing I have is the, I left it in front of everybody, the Northern Basement Systems. They keep finding it back to me. And the big thing to start with is a huge commercial dehumidifier. It's got a filter in it, carbon filter that will take the smell out and it will pull out all the moisture like in the organic material like in the walls and the door to the utility room will have to be a louvered door. That's the only thing we need to do a renovation to that. And Sherilyn's got a response from historical preservation and we're pretty good.
And this ties into the PEC Center and into the President's System we have there, is that what I wanted to, to be a pump and stuff?
Yep. That's the first step that he said.
There's emissions.
Help is getting that sound on. And it would be plumb so that nothing would have to be dumped.
Yeah.
Alright, let's, I don't want to, it sounds good. I don't know, we talked about last time about having an engineer look at stuff. And so I'm a little skeptical of running into, jumping into something. Because I think, I mean, this is a problem we've, I've chased for seven, eight years since I've been on the board. And, and I'm not, this may very well be the, the grail that we need, but I want to make sure. Sherilyn, have we, I mean, Sasha, have we had any other, I know we talked briefly about looking into an engineering firm to.
No, I haven't, I can.
Yeah, maybe we can check in that and see what we need to put out for RFP there to get something to look at. Although, I mean, like I said, I think this might be something that we end up doing, but I want to make sure it's.
Yeah, plus we got a bunch of this stuff kind of going at the same time, you know, with the town hall committee and
Yep.
The stuff that we've identified, whether, you know, by town meeting, some of it could be on the table for people to
Exactly.
Discuss or vote on, or maybe a phase one, or at least doing some of the stuff that has to be done. You know, like the water mitigation or basement project or the accessibility and such, like, you know. Anyways, I'm going to hand these out in a minute.
Yep. Nope, we'll wait on that. Will, Sasha, anything else from, from you?
Anything.
Alright, so now we're, we're back on schedule, a little bit behind. So Chuck, so we'll move on, we're back to CB Fiber. Chuck, how are you?
I'm well, how are you? All right.
We're not going to do that. A little while since we've seen you.
Yeah, I think middle of August was the last time I was in. So, since then, we have begun the whole inventory phase of our work. You may have seen some of our vehicles out there with our signs on the, on the doors.
Yeah.
They did the Village.
My house today.
Yeah, great. They did the Village on Friday, I think, and then Monday, Tuesday, they were headed out Pony Farm Road. And so, you know, we are doing a complete inventory of the town, not just the underserved portions of the town. Because that will aid in thinking through the overall design of it. There are going to be times where we have to cross over well-served territory in order to reach other people who are underserved. And we do plan to eventually bring service to everyone, although we'll be focusing on underserved first, of course. So that's, that's that. We also have an RFP out for an operator. The operator will be the subcontractor who actually runs the network. And so we're expecting to announce an operator probably sometime in the next four to six weeks. We've had a number of proposals already come in on that.
So when you say that, just give everyone an idea, when you say operator, give me an example of an operator.
Sure, well, Wakefield Champlain Valley Telecom actually acts as an operator for other networks in the state that have brand names. So for example, up in Northeast Kingdom, they run some network operations up there where it's sold as, I think, NEK Broadband or something, something to that effect. And so basically, they're sort of a invisible silent partner, you know, behind the scenes, but they do all the heavy lifting so that we don't have to actually purchase any of the equipment or, or, you know, trucks or anything like that. They already have it in due course of doing their business, so it gives them a nice little extra shooting of revenue as well. So that is coming up. Another example there is EC Fiber. Their operator is actually called ValleyNet. And so ValleyNet is a behind-the-scenes company that runs the entire EC Fiber network.
Good, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we, what we're talking about.
Yep, makes, makes sense. One other interesting tidbit, since we last met, the town of Worcester actually did vote to send some of their ERPA funds our way, somewhere in the ballpark of, I think, 55,000 of their ERPA funds. So we're getting that, which is good. Worcester is one of the towns that's quite a bit worse off than the others in our, in our area. So for them, that would be a big boon and they saw it as a huge factor, so. Questions?
It's the last time you were in, you were talking about a contractor or working with Washington Electric on something. Now, how, how does that work? I'm trying to figure out if they own the poles, you know, what, how does it work?
Yeah, so as it turns out, the vast majority of the homes and businesses that are underserved in our area are on Washington Electric. And that has to do with partnerships that existed between Green Mountain Power and Wakefield Champlain Valley Telecom where they were allowed to attach and where they decided to ultimately stop expanding their network. And so WEC, of course, operates in a number of the towns in our district and we decided to partner up and basically pursue broadband together. And there are a number of reasons for this. One, they felt that we would get access to certain funds that they would not get access to since they are not a broadband provider. That said, they've been around a long time and can get debt that we just don't have access to because we are obviously much riskier endeavor. So they're able to get much lower interest debt options. And so through this partnership, we are working it out such that they're going to actually invest in running the fiber along a lot of their poles and then lease it to us. And we sort of pool our, our access to various different funds together in order to make that happen.
Alright, so if I send money to you, what's going to them?
Some of it, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Tell me about your relationship with Wakefield Telecom. We've had a long-term relationship with them. They've treated the town very good. So why would I not want to give money to them instead, just to expand out their network to service?
That's a great question. To date, they've been unwilling to expand their network into the areas that we are going to go into. And in fact, we are hoping that they'll come in as one of the people in the running to be our operator. We have a great relationship with them. They are, of course, a trusted local provider and check off all the boxes of what we think would make a great operator for our network. That is TPD. So the bottom line to your, to your question is that they're just not willing to extend their direct network to the areas we need to go.
Alright, because when you, and you talked about it earlier, you need to go over some of the good to get to the bad.
Yep.
When you're going through that good, you'll probably take customers there too, right?
Yes, and to achieve our mission, we will eventually put a directly competitive service up even to the areas that are already good. That will be way, way down the road, but yeah, we will ultimately become a competitor.
So when you say they don't want to extend, Wakefield doesn't want to extend, you're saying like extend into a Washington Electric zone?
Yeah.
Like here in Moretown, for instance.
Yeah, there could be other reasons, I'm just unaware, but the lines are quite clear when you draw the map.
Well, maybe are they just trying to respect Washington Electric's zone area and they have their area, everybody's, you know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure what the reasons.
The areas that they, they cover.
I'm not sure what the reasons are and.
No, but I mean, that's what it's been for so long, that each of that area is all.
Yep.
Or if, maybe the question, if there was, you know, an amount of money coming from a different source, i.e. us, would they be willing to expand out?
To Moretown.
Right, to places that are.
It's worth asking.
They aren't going.
Yeah, it is worth noting, our pilot program in Moretown is moving forward, so it would aid in reducing the service costs to the Moretown customers who ultimately subscribe.
Now, what about consolidated? Now, what is the relationship there? And you know if they're doing anything?
They are. Everybody's doing something right now because there is a lot of money out there to be had for broadband infrastructure investment. And so they absolutely are doing things. My understanding is they're focusing more around Berlin than they are over here. Although I did hear a rumor about in Duxbury, one road in Duxbury that was getting fiber for some strange reason. I can tell you, they're not currently investing in Moretown. They could turn around and do it at any time. You know, that, that is their choice.
Berlin doesn't border More.
Yep, yep.
And so how about that, you're saying you're serving these underserved people?
Yes.
So Moretown borders seven different towns, so that means they have a lot of providers in just Wakefield.
Oh, sure, e- even in Moretown, we also have a portion of the town that has Comcast.
They also have TES.
Yep, now we're on the market side, yes.
Because I haven't seen anybody here who doing a full inventory just past Washington Electric or turns into Green Mountain Power. They haven't been there.
Yep, we are prioritizing the Washington Electric lines first, yes.
John, you have any questions?
No, I'm just really, really angry, especially with today. Did you have service today?
I did. I have purchased that Starlink satellite service and
Oh, okay.
It has good days and bad days, but today was a good day. And I actually, I actually worked, we're doing a home renovation, so I was working down here in the village at a friend's house.
Callie, what about you? You have any questions?
No.
I have a question, Chuck. That was regarding this map that you put out. So you list the red as underserved, okay? And I know, like, the Harrow Brook area, some of these places that are underserved are like deer camps.
Off-grid, yep.
Off the grid, so they'll never ever, they'll, they'll never ever, you'll never ever serve them. And my question is, if you're counting on those numbers there to help reduce your cost of your system, I can, I can pick out six right there, and if this is the case throughout Moretown, are you overestimating the number of people you're going to actually serve? Which would drive your initial estimate down, when in reality, if you're only going to serve half that number, your cost is going to go way up. And I'm, I'm just concerned about your numbers
Yep.
Based on this map.
It's an excellent question and excellent observation. We have accounted for that. And there is actually a strategy in play to serve them. It won't likely be fiber unless they're willing to help foot some of the expensive burying line, which they're probably not. But there's an option called fixed wireless, where basically we go as close to the property as we can. We put up an antenna that basically beams it and then they get a little receiver antenna on their side. And, you know, it does require power, so they have to have some kind of power option. If they're truly without power, then they're, you know, what's the use of the internet?
Right.
But yes, we have accounted for that and, and our calculations are based on, on grid potential customers.
Don, do you have any more questions here?
Uh, yeah, I'm just listening.
Alright, so let, let me just go over a couple of things here. So I like to get on my phone, I'm only getting on here just to, it was easier to get up the rules, kind of, you know. So how may, how may my town, city, village spend the funding? I just want to go over this real quick with everyone. Our purpose for broad criteria outlawing eligibility uses. And I'm sure all you guys read this, but just for public, I think, I just want to put this out here. To respond to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small business and nonprofits, or aid to impact, or aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel and hospitality. So that is something that we put this money towards. To respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay to eligible workers. So that's the second. For the provision of government services to the extent of reduction in revenue due to COVID-19 public health emergency relative to revenues collected in the most recent full fiscal year prior to emergency. And so this is where we get it, to make necessary investments in water, sewer or broadband infrastructure. So those are the four categories. So those are the four categories. When we get down to number four, necessary investments in water, sewer or broadband infrastructure. So what Chuck has been talking about is here, that will, that's something that fits under this bill. Water, as we're doing or finishing up this, this project here in the basin here that we've been working on, the co-pay on that, or if there's any town outlay on that, that would be covered with those funds as well. And we don't have any public sewers, so there's really no expenditure there to look at. To date, I don't have, Sasha, do you have the exact amount we have? But it's roughly $470,000, I believe, we have that. But so the question is, do we want to allocate some to broadband? I think it's a good idea. We did have, the MOU was looked at by an attorney, not the attorney that had been looking at the other towns, but it's other one, and he didn't have a problem with it, thought it was fine. However, we have received something from VLCT urging us not to sign or make any commitments at this point until further instruction comes out. There's still strings attached to this money that we don't know who's pulling those strings and how they're being pulled.
Sure.
So at this point, Chuck, I don't, I, you know, there's a whole board here, but I'm not comfortable saying, all right, we can give you this much or this much. I think there's money for broadband in here. We need to figure out the best way, I think, to get it. We have a couple of other projects. And I think I wouldn't mind getting together with maybe even you and Waitsfield to find out what type of partnerships even that we can help facilitate. Because they've since been such a good partner on this side of town for us.
Sure.
To see what would work there. And also I kind of want to hear from everyone else. As Chuck says, there's a lot of people doing a lot of things and there's a lot of money in broadband right now, as you mentioned. So if there's other people paying for it, quite frankly, I don't want to put the same dollars where someone else is putting it.
Sure.
Or potentially could put it. I don't know, what's everyone else thinking?
What kind of timeline do you want in terms of getting funded from the town as far as, you know, as we see about the American Recovery Funds or, you know, get to town meeting and maybe have something also that the folks in town would vote on or, I don't know, all the different. But what's your timeline for meeting funding?
So we are starting construction this winter on our Moretown pilot. We, if we are able to get our hands on the necessary materials, and admittedly there are material shortages galore right now, we could have service as early as next summer on our Moretown pilot. And Moretown pilot runs along the Common Road and up towards Moretown Mountain Road. And so the question is not whether that project will go forward or not. That project is going forward. The question is how much debt we will have to take on in order to deliver that project. And any funds we can get that don't have debt servicing attached mean directly translatable reduction in service costs to our customers.
So if I go to that, maybe I'm not that educated on this. So if someone lives, they're just a quarter mile up the road from the, you know, Mountain Road or whatever.
Yep.
Do they, they have to pay that to their house? Is that, do each individual house pay that part of it?
We will cover a portion of it and we have planned to cover a portion of it. But people who do have quite long runs and admittedly in that boat are likely going to have to pay some amount of money to get access to this. Whether these funds could be used to offset that for Moretown residents directly, I don't know. That could be an interesting idea to explore.
Yeah, I mean, I'm only thinking that, you know, someone might pay something at, vote on something at town meeting, you know, as part of the budget, which is part of their taxes, basically. And so then they get the service to the pole, but now they're a half a mile off their driveway and so they have to pay some of that as well. No, I guess, you know, that's just the way it is. I mean, it's not any good or bad.
Yep, it is absolute.
It's just what it is.
Yep, absolutely.
Well, yeah, I think it's just like if anyone's putting in a house and you have 500 feet of service, unfortunately you pay for yourself, you know, so you, there's-
And this is just a new thing, you know, just came along now there's internet. If you want internet, this is what, yeah.
Studies have shown that this investment does raise property values very directly. So, you know, for people who can, this is definitely an investment worth making in their, in their property. But I also understand that not everybody is going to be in a position to be able to do so.
Yeah, right.
You know, we are definitely going to be looking at ways we can help offset that. We are also making sure that as we explore pricing tiers for our service, we do have pricing availability for low-income members of our communities.
And now, there may even be provisions in here, I mean, and I think we should keep on exploring this, but where we might be able to allocate to those people with, you know, that can't afford to be hooked up through this. Because again, that might be meeting a need of the individual this way. So we'll kind of back end it this way to get them hooked up to you.
Particularly if they were directly impacted by the COVID emergency, seems likely.
Hasn't, right.
But I would caution you to explore it further, you know, with an attorney or-
Oh, absolutely.
You know, before, before going down a path like that. While attorneys are quite confident that turning over a certain amount of funds directly to us in a way that we can invest the network is going to be an allowed use. Of course, you know, VLCT is urging, taking it slow. I don't know if that use would be as easily justified.
Right, well, maybe, I think, again, maybe not even in that one, but as I read through those criteria, there's criteria to fit that in, the people who have been affected by-
Yes.
Negatively infected. Maybe the, you know, if they didn't have internet because everyone was unemployed, you know, they needed to qualify or get online to do that if they couldn't. So I don't think that would be an issue to justify if we, if we wanted to do that at some point. But then again, is it fair for everyone? So we need to look at a lot of those things.
Sure.
So Chuck, probably not the answer you were looking for tonight as far as, but it's certainly not anywhere close to a no or anything like that. We just want to make sure we're doing their due diligence, making sure that-
I appreciate that.
And again, I, personally, I can see that internet, broadband is something we need to invest in one way or another, you know, in this town. It is, I mean, that's the way of the world right now. And it's only going to get stronger as people are working from home. So we just want to make sure we're doing it the right way though. And I'm not saying yours isn't the right way, I just want to be sure everyone's on board and things are the way it should be.
I appreciate that. I would ask, what do you see as next steps to continue the conversation?
I think that's kind of on our, we need to figure out, see, we don't know what we don't know. And that's, you know, probably, you know, we, so I think we need to all take a little bit of time and maybe talk to some other towns and find out what other people are doing. And, you know, I just want to know, I don't know all the questions I should be asking you and, or other people. So I'm going to, I'm going to try to do more legwork just to, you know, make sure. And I'm really trying to make sure that I'm not duplicating others' efforts with our money or that I'm sending it to, you know, Washington Electric that, you know, has other ways of revenue and such. You know, so I want to make sure that we're maximizing the dollars for the people in town. That's, that's all I'm trying to figure out.
That's what you should be doing, so I have a Moretown resident, I appreciate it.
Yep, and I think you have a great proposal and I'm glad you're working on it because it gives it a lot of credibility in my mind for you to come in here and talk to me. And I appreciate that. You know, so it's, I think we have a good relationship and I want to continue that. You know, and we'll, you know, if you have more information, share it with us. And as we have more, we'll share it with you. But don't be afraid to poke us every once in a month and say, hey, is there anything going on? Or do you need something or where are you going with this?
Okay.
Sometimes as a board we get, just because we're volunteers and we're getting busy, we get, things get lost with us. This is not something that really-
I understand, believe me, I understand.
I don't think any of us have really forgot this money and Sherilyn doesn't let us forget it either, but it's something we're kind of moving a little slow on, and I think it's probably the best.
Okay, so I'll connect with Sasha and figure out when we can next continue the conversation.
And if you have questions, in the meantime, certainly reach out to Sasha or any of us individually or in the ears of the board as well, if they have questions to, you know, pass them through to Chuck and let us know when you find out if you have something going on.
Yep, and for what it's worth, we have recently switched our emails to have official CB Fiber emails now. So you can email moretown@cbfiber.net and you'll get the Moretown delegation, which of course Karen and myself. So, you know, anytime you want to shoot an email to us, you can just email moretown@cbfiber.net.
Moretown@cbfiber.net, very good.
Yeah, all right, thank you, everyone.
Thanks a lot, Chuck.
I think I had one more question.
Yeah, I have actually one more.
Yeah, please.
Again, going back to your point of interest earlier, you had a price tag of $2 million for Moretown service.
Correct.
And so we're not, I don't believe we're going to get $2 million in recovery act money, right?
Right.
So where would the rest of the money come from? If you cannot use community tax dollars, where does the, where do you get your rest of your money? The difference in the recovery act and what you need, where's it coming from?
Sure, so first of all, let me start by saying we are 21 communities. We say communities because Berry City is one of our communities, so we avoid towns. Montpelier is also one of our communities. And among those 21 communities, every community is in a fairly different state of need at this point in time. So our build plan prioritizes, again, the underserved, as you've repeatedly said multiple times at this point in time. Prior to Waterbury joining the district, we had estimated the entire build of the project to be approximately $50 million. So that is actually the amount of funds we are considering. Of course, 2 million is the estimated Moretown portion of that. With Waterbury on board, back of the envelope, you know, gut, gut take, we're probably looking at closer to $60 million for the entire build. And of course, you get up in Waterbury Center and there's some sprawling portions to cover. So all of that being said, we have put together a plan that is largely based on loans that we can get. And the way it works is there's a set of loans that we can get from the state that are high-interest loans to accommodate the fact that, you know, we're a fairly high-risk endeavor at this point in time. We have no revenues to point to to prove we've been successfully operating for some time. The idea would be to take those high-interest loans, build out the network, show three to four years of revenues, then turn around and get municipal revenue bonds at much lower interest rates. And so that's the model EC Fiber followed successfully to build out their network down in the White River Valley. And it worked. Now, the problem though, is that in doing that, a large portion of their subscribers' fees go to cover debt servicing. So what we see as the opportunity with something like ARPA is not enabling this. We were going to attempt to do this, regardless of that money coming or not. What it does do is it allows us to offset that debt servicing on a regular basis to lower our customers' fees directly.
Okay.
Okay, so do you have another one?
The long haul, I mean, down the road, when you were saying you could potentially see even down in this part of Moretown, people could subscribe to CB Fiber if they wanted. If they would have the option of not using Waitsfield Telecom, they might use CB Fiber. Or the way they use Comcast or something.
There's a lot that remains to be seen in how the CUD concept ends up forming. We only have one example to work from at this point in time, which is EC Fiber. And they invented the model and they did end up providing service in areas that already had options. So for example, in the village of Bethel, going through Bethel, they, they had cable, but now they also have access to CB Fiber. And so the intent of the Communications Union District model was to help the underserved. But our charge is to provide service to everyone in our communities.
Someday.
So, so we're at this weird, there's this constant tension in what we try to do where we really just want to get the underserved people help. And particularly in a town like Moretown where we do have a great provider in part of the town, it's not really in our interest or desire to want to go compete with them directly, although I do think generally speaking, competition is a good thing in these kinds of services. But, you know, Waitsfield-
That's down the road.
Yeah, that's down the road. I mean, we're probably talking best-case scenario, four to five years, if not longer. And, you know, similarly, Montpelier, Berry City, you know, they're going to be at the tail end. A lot of Waterbury is going to be at the tail end. Whereas towns like Orange, Plainfield, Marshfields, you know, they're in Moretown's portion.
Just that don't have service, that's the most important part.
Middlesex and Worcester are really bad off, with the exception of one small portion of Route 2.
Very good.
All right.
Any other question for Chuck?
Feel free to-
No, thank you, that's just, that's what I'm doing.
Feel free to shoot me an email and give me a call if you have any other questions and I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thanks for doing what you're doing.
Thank you, Chuck.
Yeah, thank you for doing that. Ray, how are you tonight?
Good.
Thank you for making it. All right, so we were, for Chuck, we had Emily Wood and we had some errors of emissions here.
Yeah, actually, I was able to listen to the meeting in my truck on the way over. But I couldn't, I couldn't talk, I don't know why, but-
Well, because I didn't allow you to.
But I did, I heard everything that was, was talked about prior to me coming through the door.
Good, I didn't want that. So we're going to continue on with reports communications. John, why don't you share, will it share?
Okay, I did attend the annual meeting of VLCT. It was a little different this year, the format. In years past, they had, they went over basically everything that they were going to present to the legislature, which had to do with highways and quality of life and so on. So it had a different format. So this year, they had the business meeting and there really wasn't much to approve there. And then they are having now, Monday, today through Friday, they're having different sessions on different topics. And I believe Sherilyn, is that that one today?
Yeah.
Yeah, Sherilyn attended today's session. And so this is both on Zoom and in person. So, so that made it different too. So, but other than that, there really wasn't much to report. And that's all I have. That's it, John.
What do you, Ray, how about yourself? Do you have anything you want to add?
I did set up a meeting with the lady over-
Susan Smith?
Yes, and that's, I think that's a 14th, next week sometime.
Okay.
I've talked to Martin about it and made sure he's on board to go to that meeting as well to see what's going on. I did talk to Joe Gabory regarding the War Memorial. And basically, we're going to move it, it's not going to be in the exact same location because if we want to put it in the same location, we'd have to hire the guy to come back twice. So I, I thought it'd be okay to move it far enough, you know, that he can just dig one hole, pick up the monument and set it in the new hole without having to, you know, add additional cost to the whole thing. And I did talk to Martin again about the trailer endorsement. I talked to him today about that. Hopefully, he's not making it a priority to get it done this, this year, this fall.
Cool, anything else, sir?
That's it.
Good. Don?
Well, I was just curious because Steve Robbins, when he was here last week, and he sent that email about the far-off plans which had- which I think that John was talking to him about. Or me, or I don't know, I don't remember. Anyways, that's, I was just curious, what, what are we doing with that? I was confused what that was about, what Steve was referencing in the email that we got forwarded from Sasha about it.
Well, we, we need to get a, a committee together, you know, and, um, I'll, I'll talk, you're talking more with Steve about that. But basically it would be a good idea, and I think Ray, you volunteered to be on the stuff here.
No, this is a forestry manager for the trailer stuff.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
Or like maybe even Mike Brown would be on it too.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Maybe some people from the raccooning.
Yeah, I mean, he could be the, he could be the forester, because that's what we need. We need a forester and, um, and then somebody from, um, Parks and Rec. And then Planning Commission.
Yeah.
And so on, so, so we should be pulling that together.
Alright, well, let me know if you need some help.
Okay.
And the other thing is I wanted to just mention, so, uh, Morefest was great as we all know, with lots of fun. The little booth that we had on the Town Hall was great. We got a lot of good feedback and some interesting comments. So the next thing is I brought some of these down, you can take a look at it. But then I thought we could just leave having in the office if people do come to the Town Hall. But the reason I'm showing you this is because next, on Friday the 17th, uh, it will be, uh, we're going to have a, um, people come to the Town Hall as part of our community engagement and as part of the grant that Corde and they were at the UCF Library. Did I already give you one of these? So it's going to be just sort of an in-person, give feedback about what we found, you know, what we've done so far. Show people what it could be or not be, you know, and just get some more input from the community. And then there'll also be another one on the 21st, which will be virtually for those who want to join us that way. So, um, we're having a meeting Thursday to prepare for that a little bit more. And then, uh, also get the Town Hall ready for a very unfortunate celebration.
Yeah, um, thank you for bringing that up maybe. I think, uh, now might be an appropriate time, maybe we'll take a moment to reflect. As we know, we lost a member of our community up the road here last week, Amy Eilers. So why don't we all just take, you know, half a minute here to reflect and think.
It was amazing a little bit.
Yep. Yeah, thank you, everyone. Life is short, so live it to its fullest because you never know.
So, you know, I hope that, um, the, we have everybody here, you know, you can fall a ten, you know. So if you can, I'm going to drop in on the 17th, that would be great.
Thank you, John. Anything else?
Well, no, that's it for me.
Shall we?
Sasha, can I give you some of these that maybe have on the counter or something? Great. Oh, oh no, oh, I have one more thing. Sorry. Your hats were a great success.
Oh, oh yeah.
Right, I, I would imagine, you know, we're broke even, we're on our way to, for our funds for Morefest. The rest of the hats go, are going to go to next year's Morefest. We have kids hats and we have adult hats, you know. And so, uh-
Raise them, raise your hair.
Yeah, yeah, raise them, admire them, that's great, perfect. And, um, anyways, if you know anybody, we've still got, I don't know, 16 left. And, um-
I got $18.
Uh-oh.
How much are they Ray?
20.
I might have two for you. Oh boy.
I got one.
But people, you know, we'll put that in the envelope. So when, when I finish selling them, you know, at some point, and I have this money from the hats and all. And Deerfield Design was great, they, they were really reasonable and they made a bit of a donation too, just by reducing the price. So now, then I'm going to have a bunch of cash. So how, who would I do that to?
Sherilyn.
And then she'll put it somewhere for next year?
Yeah. Yeah, I think there's a Morefest fund, or if not, we'll make sure there is one so it goes there. So it's something that's gone. Thank you, John.
John, will you do a whole one for me, please?
Sure.
Price is going up now.
No, no.
Get them while the Christmas rush here or something.
Right, right.
Alright, Miss Callie, what did you have for us, anything?
Um, so I was able to connect with Danny Hale, who's one of the heads of VASA. And basically the information that I got from him was the change in the ATV ordinance did not change anything at all. So if ATVs were allowed on class four roads, they are still allowed on class four roads by the town. The town has always had that ability to make that change. So if they were allowed, that didn't change anything, it just changed some wording. And he was actually the perfect person to talk to because he was the person who changed the wording. So, um, we talked a little bit more about ATV use and he knew exactly, in essence, the main place that I was talking about. And his response was if we wanted to do an ordinance or anything, he would be happy to help. But, um, he said, "The people who are riding in these areas are locals." He's like, "You're not going to get people coming in from VASA to ride on a six mile loop." He said, "It's, it's not going to happen." He goes, "They're primarily locals, they've been your locals." He was actually part of the group a while ago when they had come in to put trails in. So he has kind of been through the course of it all. And he said, in essence, that they're having trouble with their own enforcement with how it is.
Yeah.
So they're not getting anywhere with their stuff either. So that's kind of where he was, he was willing to help, but.
He doesn't make it would be much help, but right?
Right, but in essence, that wording didn't change anything for what the town may or may not have had in place to begin with. So it just tweaks some wording for the legislature for something that was written poorly to begin with. And his response was, "Your locals are going to be there, in essence, kind of no matter what you do."
Regardless, right.
"You're going to have your locals," he said, "people aren't coming in and there aren't any trails in the area to connect to make it more appealing." So what I'm thinking about when they were talking about having, you know, loops on these apps is it's probably like map my run with Under Armour or the hiking things where if people do a loop and they GPS point it, it then automatically uploads. So if I was running and I ran, I ran the same loop, someone who was new coming into the area who didn't know, like, let's say I traveled to Boston, I could go into my app and say, "Oh, you know, where are the most commonly used places?" So that's probably where it pops up. But they didn't have any interest in expanding anything this way. In essence, really wanting to touch anything over this way. So, and that is what I got from him.
So we might be better off, you know, as we get more information here, rather than, you know, opening up things. God bless you. Is really just trying to enforce something on those roads that we have now or keeping the people, I don't know. I, I don't see where, now that we've got more of this, is no one really wants to engage with us to help with
Right.
the management of anything and they frankly say it doesn't really work. I, I do a fair amount of travel in New Hampshire and when I go northern New Hampshire, there's a couple, there's some towns and it's, you've got to be fairly careful of the way you're driving because there's a lot of four-wheelers that are using the roads and that's what, they're allowed up there, so.
But they're all registered.
Right.
And that's, that's a problem that we have right now is, you know, I'm registered and 80% of the people are registered, but there's that 20% that's not registered.
They just fly all over the place.
They just go all over the place. And, and I heard you talking about what happened this weekend, I mean, they probably, none of them were registered.
Right.
So there's no way.
Well, more than just registration, you have to be properly insured.
Right, I mean, that's just the beginning.
It doesn't give you the okay to ever travel down road unless you're properly insured.
Right, there's a lot that they're not complying by, so I-
Yeah, it's-
It's, we've got to figure out to try to maybe keep the loop closed rather than open it up to more potential.
Well, your problem on that loop is not your ATVs. Your problem on the loop is vehicles, which are fully allowed to be up there.
And then they go off-road with the trucks and things like that?
Yeah, I mean, we, in essence, set up a game camera that automatically watches Lynch Hill and our upper field because we've had more than one vehicle blow donuts in our upper field. Or we've had friends go head up the hill and have seen people parked there and in essence blocked them in and said, "What are you doing? You're not supposed to be up here." So we have a camera, so we know who goes up the hill and who comes down the hill. But it's more, it's not necessarily the ATVs. I haven't really seen anybody but the trucks that go up there.
And we've learned from past experience that posting signs and closing it doesn't work because we've done that and that's-
Yeah.
the signs end up trashed and the chains end up knocked over. We had Lieutenant White in here and you heard what their response is, is it's lukewarm when they can. But they're, they're fairly out, so.
And that's why we got the camera, so we know who's up there. We get an automatic picture when they're up there. And, I mean, they're great pictures, you get license plates and everything and that's how you, in essence, get.
Right, so private, if you can get private landowners like yourself to continue doing that. I think the other thing we might have with police, and Sasha, can you follow up with Lieutenant White? I know they were looking to send us a contract. I know we were looking for just budget time, but the sooner that we can start thinking about that and maybe incorporating that, and maybe those are the type of things that can, like patrols. I mean, that's what we're more apt to keep people out of there than I think anything. Nothing else seems to work, John.
I don't really know that much about this stuff really. But what was Steve McGill when he was here, uh, to, one of the meetings before? He mentioned that there was something, something stopped everybody from being able to do the loop because there was a washout or-
There was a culvert that was washed out.
And so then he was wondering, I mean, then he was asking, "Could there be a gate there?" Is that, that's the other question, you couldn't do it? I mean, I've never been on the road, so I don't know.
We would have-
Can't do it and then just go around it anyway.
Yeah, and you don't have to go through a whole process to fully close that road. You'd have to go through a whole separate process. And, I mean, there's a lot of hunting camps on either side. There's one, there's someone who just purchased land, there's going to be potentially two houses up there.
Oh wow.
So, on, on the closer sides of each, it's getting pretty more-
Are your houses on a class four?
Potentially.
Yeah, but we're seeing more and more-
Tell them it's a camp, yeah.
Yeah, we're seeing more and more camps
Yeah.
become full-time residents and that, that's an issue, that's a real issue.
Well, I think we've talked to the DRB about that.
Yeah, and it's, it's still happening, hopefully they're on top of it.
Because, um, like actually, who was it? He used to be here on the board, he's with the, um-
Oh, Dave Van Duzen?
Remember, because there was an issue there. And I think the DRB had put in his permit, if you decide to live here full-time, then you're going to need to upgrade or those are the things we need to look about in these roads. Because if people live in a class four and then all of a sudden they want services, um, you know, there needs to be, uh, alright, you guys need to have, there needs to be mechanism to pay for that infrastructure.
Yeah, I think the only one who's approved to be there all the time would be Wet Souls.
Would be?
Wet Souls, Clayton?
Yeah, the one-
Because they're like-
The guy that bought Woody's, Woody's place. Is here full-time.
Yeah, I don't think he's supposed to be.
I'm trying to meet all these people.
Did you just sell a piece of property up there over there? Or sell, did you sell a piece of property that somebody's had a can on or something?
I, I was partnered in some land up there quite a while, I don't know, in 2001.
I mean, most of them are, in essence, hunting camps, people aren't there.
Right.
But, starting soon, they're going to be there.
Alright, so, I guess, um, no real good answers on how to take care of those roads. I think the best thing is landowners like yourself continue to put up game cameras and report. If you see someone, especially if you see someone going up the road with a trailer, a trailer and ran a Jeep or something like that or anything, you need to, you know, let people know.
Yeah, I kicked a couple people off this spring who Sean had told that they could be there and then I came out and said, "Uh, actually, no, you can't, you need to leave."
And I, and I do, you know, when I see people, I have talked to quite a few people, and a lot of people think that it's public land up there.
Right.
And I've told them it's, it's not public land, there's a right of way and that's where you have to stay. Yeah, I haven't had any really big arguments, but.
Because I, I don't think that opening up the roads, it doesn't sound like opening up the roads, ATV use is any, because we don't, we don't have anyone to help enforce. I mean, that was the idea behind that, is if there was-
Right.
something, we could have ordinances and then we can enforce it, but we, there's no way to enforce it. So, I think, uh, we need to try to figure out another strategy maybe to to combat that. Thank you, Callie, anything else?
There's a van and I'm probably either going to call Martin or the state police about it that's been parked on a very sketchy corner on Jones Brook Road for basically all summer, making that piece a one-lane road. So, and I know, um, I think Rodney was going to stop today and talk to them and tell them to move it when they brought the excavator down from doing the culvert work, but he didn't have a chance, so if I don't get a hold of Martin, I'm going to stop.
Well, yeah, don't, actually just, don't you stop and talk to him, don't stop, talk to Martin, call the state police.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll call them then.
Yeah, you don't want, uh, anyone in a situation that you don't know what's, what it is. And if it's been there all summer, you know, just let them-
They've been doing work there and they have had their stuff in the road all summer.
So there is a house there then, or it's something that they're working on?
They're working on it.
Yeah, it was an old schoolhouse in there.
Alright, I thought it was just parked there in a corner somewhere.
No, it's on-
If they want to stop and tell them to get the stuff out of the way, you know, you can certainly reach out to Martin. I thought it was just an abandoned vehicle type or they were parking there at night.
No, they've just left it there. I mean, their stuff's been in the road all summer. It's basically made a corner that, especially when it rains, can be slippery anyway, much harder to navigate.
You know, first let them know that we'd leg it out of the way. They may not know that it's been a pain in the butt, so, um, they probably should, but they, they may not realize it and so if we can let them know, tell Martin to let them know or Rodney to leave it, or take the excavator and just push it out of the way.
They've got a next driveway now, so it can go in there.
Okay. So nothing else with you, Callie?
Nope.
Alright. Just a couple of quick things with me. Again, Morefest, uh, well done, I think everything went really well. There was, I don't know, what, 200, 300 people or something like that, I don't know. I was, um, everything seemed to have gone very smooth.
Fireworks are awesome too, yeah?
Yeah, I think, uh, we were really fortunate, they do a great job for us.
We heard them.
Oh, on the other side of the mountain?
Yeah, we could, we heard them through, through the trees. We could, we could see like a light glow.
You should have.
But we could hear them.
And the fire department did a great job with their corn and, uh, their famous french fries now, I guess.
Yeah.
So, uh-
And the beer was good.
Yeah. Lawson's Finest Liquids, they are right, Ray?
Yep.
Good, nice to hear. Had a good cupcake there too. Maybe on the corner some cupcakes was pretty good. The only other thing I have is I had a letter, it's on my phone, I'll forward it to you, a request to get on the REC committee and it was from me and Martin, she's my wife. So I will pass that on all, but she had attended the meeting last week with the REC committee and so would like to be appointed to that. If everyone, if anyone wants to make that motion.
Sure, I'll make that motion. Leanne Varden to be on the REC committee.
All right, what kind of discussion do I have on this? Nothing, I think she'll do a good job. She enjoys working with people and had a good time with the Morfests committees.
She's doing a great job with Morfests.
Yeah, sure is.
So, all in favor, go to aye.
Aye.
So the REC committee still needs one more person though, right?
Yes.
So we should still.
Yeah, oh yeah, still be reaching out, looking for, I know you said you thought you may have known someone. Anyone, you know, we certainly, we need total of seven and that. I don't know if that includes Steve getting done too, because remember Steve stepping down and.
Yeah, I think he said it does, yeah.
So all the people there that help. So if it's all right, they wanted, they were going to use this meeting room and we said it was okay. I will just give Leanne my key so that we don't have to fool around with you guys. So that it'll make it a little bit smoother, if that works. All right, so let's go ahead and move on, old business.
Can we just back up this a second there? I missed the, what you were talking about Fletcher Road, did we receive any bids?
No, we didn't, thank you Ray for bringing that up. So, no bids were received, the feedback we had from Winter Set, that there were, the bids weren't detailed enough?
The only person I heard from was Bo and Cody and I, and I thought, I made it clear to bid on documents as they're written, but I thought the documents were specific enough that they could have put a price on it with more detail. But did Parent not bid on it?
Thirty days you had bid on it.
Because we did put the bid date, our completion date of October, I think, wasn't it? Next year, so I thought we gave.
That's plenty time, yeah. Ray, if we could take a look at that RFP and maybe you want to reach out to those guys and find out kind of our, where, you know, what is that word?
Okay.
Short.
Did they send, did they send anybody in?
Sherman sent them reminders today, Winter Set said that and then Parent Construction didn't have time. She sent one to Bo and Cody, communicated with her before, but no answer today.
They will have to delay a bid till the end of the construction season, you know.
Hello?
Hi.
Hello?
Yes, hello. Who is this? Someone keeps on getting on with the phone, nine oh five. No, he's shown up as himself, but there's something on the phone.
Hello? Is anybody there or am I just alone?
David, can you hear us?
Technology problems.
Not really.
Are we muted?
No.
He's not unmuted.
Dave, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
All right, well, we'll be with you in just a couple of minutes. We've got a couple of things in front of you, Dave, if you can just hold steady for just a moment, please.
Okay, I, I thought there was no connection because I was on at five oh seven and disconnected and I've been trying to connect it as well.
Well, we've seen you up on the screen, you've been, you've been here. So if you just hold still for just a minute and then we'll get right to you, how's that?
Will do.
Thank you. All right. So we had old business while you were gone and Ray's going to follow up on the Fletcher Road Bridge. Is there another old business from below that we need to chat about?
Not below, but I wanted to talk more about.
Or in general.
The hearing.
Go ahead.
From DRB. So it, it didn't go well the other night because we didn't have representation from anybody from Watershed Consulting. So we've set up, there's another one set up for the fifteenth, is that right, Sasha?
Twenty-first of October.
The twenty-first of October, twenty-first, okay.
Twenty-first of October. Now, just so everyone knows, John, this is the DRB you're talking about, right?
Correct.
And the project is?
Yep, so the project is the, the stormwater system out, out here with the, the two gravel ponds and so on to take care of any of the stormwater. And so it, bottom line is, there were a lot of questions and with the, the materials that they had available to them, it just, they're the, the, the map is really small and even when it was enlarged, Paula Woods had enlarged on her computer and it still didn't come out well. And some of the questions that came up, one, Holland Brown attended and he wondered about a, an easement across his property. And Ray, I don't think we, no, we didn't talk about that.
No.
And it sure looks like the, the overflow is going to be going out perhaps on their property.
To that?
So I think.
To the drainage, I mean.
Right, to, to the, the over.
Right.
Overflow area. And so from there, it was going to tie into the, the culvert down here that goes down to the, the new catch basin by St. Patrick's. And we, to begin with, we had some difficulty with the property line there anyway for there. But now we're extending where the easement that we did get from them is no longer in effect, so.
Want to revisit that.
Yeah, yeah, so I think what we have to do, we, we, Sherlin said we have a large map here, right? That she said was in color and everything, okay. So I think we need to sit down and really take a close look at that. But as far as I know, the funding can still go forward. So the grant funding can still go forward. And, but it would be good if we could clear some of these issues up prior to the twenty-first.
So you're going to work on that?
Yeah, yeah, we're kind of, because some of the other questions, Ray, had to do with, when you talk about there won't be standing water within forty-eight hours or something of a heavy rain. And they wanted to know how deep the water would be because as one of the board members pointed out, you could have, you know, you can drown in an inch of water. And nowhere did they talk about, you know, that as well, so.
Well, and so you've been contacted Watershed to get them involved to make sure. I've seen emails from Pam DeAndrea.
Yes.
And getting things put together so that we can put a professional presentation forward with those guys.
Yeah. And, and that's unfortunate too, is that Pam DeAndrea is leaving. So I don't even know who to be dealing with. But as far as I know, she's going to still, you know, work, work on this until we've got everything and she's going to put in the, submit the grant and everything, so we'll be all right there.
Anything else on that?
Uh, no, that was it.
Any other old business we have to discuss, Ray, did you have anything?
I do not.
Anyone around the table, Tom, Sean? All right, so instead of going to new business because we're falling a little behind here and we got David on the line, David was here. David, can you hear me?
Am I unmuted now?
You are.
Hello, can you hear me?
You're hearing just fine.
Okay, good, because my microphone on my computer isn't working for some reason, so I had to call in on the phone to be able to talk.
Okay, that's your oh-five-nine-one, is that your number, David?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, so you were discussing class four roads and legal trails, what'd you have for us?
Yep, just if I could mention very quickly, at the DRB meeting here the other day, Mr. Hugaboom did a very fine job of representing the town, but there's some technical issues that, that are best served being represented by the, the engineers. But he did a fine job and I commend him on his efforts. Okay, you're quite welcome. Everybody gets nervous at these hearings, everybody. Okay, so my conversation tonight is just informational, just pointing out what I've witnessed as activity in multiple towns in that development is happening in areas that historically was really not done in the towns on the class four roads and town trails. And different towns have different regulations about the zoning on, for development on these. And the DRBs rely on the zoning to give them guidance for any conditions that they put for development on a class four road or a town trail. And I am just suggesting to the select board that this is an issue in multiple towns and planning commissions in different towns have been given different direction from different select boards. And I'm suggesting that you take a little think about this. How do you want to handle development on class four, class or town trails? The specific point of concern is public safety. Some of the class four roads are really, really narrow and two vehicles just cannot pass, even two cars, so somebody's got to back up. And more seriously is if there is an emergency vehicle, a fire truck, there's absolutely no way they can pass on a lot of portions of town trails. Some towns have requirements in their zoning that there has to be a pull-off every three hundred, three hundred and fifty or four hundred feet of typically ten by thirty-five or forty feet to allow emergency vehicles or any vehicles a pull-off to pass. So I'm suggesting that you consider what your class four road policies are, what your zoning is and decide is this an issue that you think you should address or take a look at? And if so, which is the appropriate board to give the recommendations for the statutes? It could be done as a class four road policy or it could be put into the zoning regulations. There's, different towns do it different ways. I'm not suggesting one way is better than the other. I will point out that practically speaking, this could be a thorny issue. In the future, if somebody puts development on a class four road and it's in the zoning and the DRB addresses it, they could say you've got to put bypasses every three hundred or three hundred and fifty or four hundred feet. And in some cases, that could be quite a bit of development. So whatever recommendations, whatever board comes up with, it's got to be done carefully with thought as to the impacts for any future land development on these, in these situations. So it's just a second, just for information, that is what I propose to discuss with the board or present to the board.
Thanks, David, do you have any, it sounds like you've gone to other towns and there's a lot of other things going on. Do you have a list of ideas or ordinances or?
No, I don't have any off the top of my head. I have seen them lots of times, I look through zoning for comparison purposes. I could, I could spend a little time and try to get some examples. I would look through the zoning stuff rather than the town ordinances and I could report back to either the select board or the planning commission, as you wish.
No, I, tonight it came up a little earlier, we were on the periphery of, we were talking about, I think it was development on class four or such. So it is something that we've discussed before and we do have some things in their ordinances. At the top of my head, I can't think what they are. But if you want to go ahead and look into what other towns are doing and then report back to us, I think that would be a good idea. In the meantime, we can kind of circle the wagons here and figure out who needs to make, whether it's you or, like you said, the planning commission, to find out the best way to go to, and again, whether it comes through a class four road policy or, or zoning, you know, we'll need to figure that out. But I think it's, I think it's a good, good thing to look at and I appreciate that.
Okay, this will be at least a month before I get back to you because I'm backlogged now. So it will be at least a month.
Yeah, no, that would be just fine.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
All right, well, before you go, I had a couple of questions for you, if you don't mind. Something came up this week. It was a permit that you had issued to Dan Noise, was it Dan Noise? Yes, and it should have gone to the DRB, can you tell me about that?
Yes, this is quite an embarrassment. I did not act on that application within thirty days. The Motown zoning says that any application that's not acted on within thirty days is approved, deemed approved. The state statutes which control zoning say the exact same thing. If you don't act on it within thirty days, it's approved. Now, by action, that means either approve it, deny it, or refer it to the DRB. I did not act on it in time, so when I looked at it, I said I missed it by two days. There's the statutes in the zoning and the state statutes, it was clear to me that I had to approve it. So I did approve it and I put the conditions that the E-nine-one address had to be obtained for the initial unit and that he had to post the zoning notice in view of the public right-of-way, which is Route Two at that point. A adjoining neighbor saw the notice and has an issue and has submitted an appeal. The appeal was, application was complete and the fee was submitted. So I scheduled this appeal for the DRB meeting, which is going to be the twenty-first. And in my discussions with the LCT, there's some technical stuff about this issue. It turns out that there's not only statutes which control the zoning regulations, but there's also case law, cases that go to court and then a precedent is set by the court. So this is rather a complicated issue and it is all in the hands of the DRB at this point.
Okay, how did you happen to miss the thirty-day deadline?
You want the details of my health issues? I will give them, you will wish that you never have anything happen to you like happened to me. It put me behind a couple of weeks and the workload has been heavy.
David, I don't, I don't need details, but so you're saying you're out because you are not working, is that it?
It's, I didn't. It's, uh, I didn't, I didn't get to it, Tom, I missed it, it's my fault, I missed it, I'm not shucking that responsibility. I just say I screwed the pooch, and I couldn't have picked a worse application to do it on.
What's that comment you just made?
Uh, it's a colloquial comment that I use, so. So I made a mistake, I've apologized and I'm leaving it at that.
Have we ever, um, missed a deadline like that before and issued a permit, had to issue a permit or, or such?
I am not aware of, of that happening in, in Morteown. In Waitsfield, uh.
I'm not talking about someone, I'm talking about you and us.
No, I have not missed one.
Did anything happen with, um, the Newman property, Lucinda Newman, like that, did we miss something and we ended up having to issue a permit there too?
Uh, I correct myself, I'm sorry, I did miss that one. And that was, that was negotiations back and forth, and she, she realized that there was a gap in communications of thirty days, and she asserted her right to get a permit issued, and I did. So I stand corrected, uh, Tom, it did happen once before.
Okay, thank you, um, any other questions for David?
I have one for Dave, what's, can I ask that?
Sure, what's the Travis, and, so we have a, wait a second, just a minute, uh, David, we have a, uh, uh, someone from the public, I know you are Travis. Uh, Travis Blodgett here, he has a question for you, so I'm gonna go ahead and let him ask it, go ahead Travis.
David, what's our current, uh, zoning regulations, do we have a current zoning regulation?
Uh, sir, could you please move closer to the microphone, yeah, 'cause I'm just hearing echoes, I cannot hear you.
Sorry about that, uh, David, do we have a current zoning regulation on, um, access and footage requirements in our zoning bylaws?
Do we have a?
For building, for building on class four roads and legal trails.
Uh, yes, we do, for the class four roads, any development on a class four road has to be approved by the DRB.
Uh, how about some?
The way in, is there, is any, any development that's not on a class one, two, three road, or public right-of-way, has to be approved by the DRB. So there can be landlocked lots that are accessed through deeded right-of-ways, but the zoning administrator can approve those, those have to be done by the DRB.
Is that accordance with Act four-four, one-two, abbreviation three?
Uh, yeah.
Alright, anyone else, any other question? Hey Dave, uh, Ray has one more question for you.
Dave, I, I talked to you earlier about the permit for, uh, the work on the, um, the restoring the schoolhouse on Jonesburg Road. Uh, initially you told me, um, they didn't need a permit, but now I understand that you've asked them to get a permit, and meanwhile, the work has continued up there. Uh, so where, where do you stand on that, are they gonna get a permit, are they not gonna get a permit, or what's going on with that?
And who is this, who am I speaking to, sir?
This is Ray Washburn.
Okay, Ray, uh, when they initially, uh, approached me about development on this building, they said that they were going to be doing external repairs and internal work, and there would be no changes in building dimensions. While they were doing the construction work, repairing the, the foundation, which does not require a permit, it's maintenance repairs, they ran into high groundwaters, so they raised the building four or five feet. That was made, uh, I was made aware of this by a neighbor, and I went and investigated, and lo and behold, the building was higher. So that constituted a change in the structure, it's no closer to the road, but it's now four feet higher. So that's a change in dimensions, and that requires a permit. And I advised the owner that they had to put in a permit, and I advised the owner that you have done the construction without the permit, and they paid the one hundred percent penalty for doing construction without a permit. When I received the permit, it indicated that the setback from the building to the center of the road was sixty-two feet. The zoning regulations in that zoning district are, it has to be sixty-five feet. So I advised the owner that, I'm sorry, I can't approve this permit, you are going to have to put in a application to the DRB, and a conditional use application, to get approval for doing this work, to get a waiver for this setback. That application was submitted, the fees were submitted, that is on the schedule for the hearing on the twenty-first.
Okay, uh, I, I'm just surprised that, uh, they've been able to continue, uh, work there, I mean, uh, I'm not opposed to the project, I'm just surprised that, that, you know, this project has been going on since May, and it hasn't stopped, and there's been no po, no permit posted up there, and, you know, it's right on the main road up there, and a lot of people are asking how, how they can do that. Uh, it, it just, it just looks bad from the, from the whole town.
Well, I understand, they've got their permits, their permit, um, it should be posted, uh, would take them to do that.
Well, you just said you couldn't, they had a.
It should be posted by now or tomorrow. Um, I told them I could not authorize continued work, and that any work they do would be at risk and could be ordered to be torn apart by the DRB. Now again, my, my goal is to get people into compliance with the zoning, it's not to punish people. And having them submit the applications and get scheduled, I view is, is working diligently to get them into compliance.
Very good, alright David, thank you, um, if there's no other questions for you, you're, uh, free to leave, or you're free to stay, however you'd like to do it.
Thank you very much, sir, you have a good evening.
You as well, thank you. Alright, so, um, that is our zoning, so now, breathe in for a second, and let's go back, um, to new business. Anyone has new business for the board tonight? Anybody? Nothing, Sasha, what about yourself, we have anything new, um, old stuff, we all, we're still good with the town garage and the lights and that stuff that's going on, or the? Just the DocuSign, that's all we're doing, which, John, or you are gonna DocuSign it, well, you guys, arm wrestling tonight, before we do the arm wrestling for that privilege.
Yeah. I mean, the only thing on the town hall is, um, you know, we also have that condensation, uh, problem that we need to.
Sasha's going to, um, I guess, look and, one, look for the, uh, ask Sherlin, see what's out there for any kind of grants to, to look at, but we need to do a scoping study or something, engineering study on the town hall for.
No, not the town hall, town hall, no, no, I was talking about the town hall, I'm sorry, did I say town hall?
Yes.
Well, also, so the lighting, and then we also have another issue there, which Ray is working on, trying to save, yeah, wall, we'll look at that.
Like everybody else, it's, it's just a bad time of year to try to even talk to anybody about anything.
As long as it's on everyone's radar.
Yeah, it is on the radar, for sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure, we'll just gonna use the grant for the lighting, and then we'll have to see what we can get next year, and we'll get some pricing for it, and we can include it at town meetings.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's alright, that's alright, but we're still, we got that, alright, so if there's nothing else, I do have something, um, I'd like to go into executive session with. Um, so, I'd like to, um, go in, make a motion to go into, uh, executive session, and I'm doing it on the number four, and this is, um, stating it's a disciplinary dismissal action against the public officer or employee, but nothing in this subsection should be, um, construed to appear that right of such officer or employee to a public hearing, if formal charges are. So, and it would be just the board, so Sasha, you can head out tonight, Travis, have a nice night, and work, I thank you for coming. So, um, do you need a second on that?
Uh, I, I did.
Oh, you did, alright, John, second, all in favor, go right.
Alright.
Alright.